Yeah.
Alright, I'd like to call this regular board meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, September eighteenth. The time is seven o'clock. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, let's re-reflect that all members are present with the exception of Josh Pettit. Was this meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was. As a reminder, it's being livestreamed and recorded.
Alright, welcome visitors. Is there any public comment tonight? We'll move on then to highlight on youth. We have the Synchro Central trap team and we have Gretchen and her students Oliver Cran, Riley Cran, Landry Roseboom, and Liam Boil. And Justin?
Alright, well first of all, we'd like to thank you for inviting us to come and share a little bit about our team with you. Um, my name is Gretchen Roseboom. I started in twenty fourteen with the school district and I've basically been with the team since then. Um, I started, I guess, not fully on the team as maybe the lead until probably spring of twenty fifteen, but my oldest son was on the team or had an interest in the team. So I've really been involved with it since its inception. Um, I don't necessarily consider myself quote unquote a coach, um, even though I've learned quite a bit about how the sport operates and and is handled, but I really like to consider myself the lead paper pusher instead. Um, and and some of these folks behind me here are more of of kind of the the managers and the coaches. But I'm gonna turn this over so that you can hear from from the ones that actually secure the titles that we have won over the the last decade or so.
Uh, good evening. Thank you for having us. Uh, we would like to tell you a little bit more about our trap team. We are registered through the U S Clay Target League. The USA Clay Target League started in twenty fourteen and we have been part of the league for from the very beginning. This is the ten year anniversary of our team. We shoot a spring season and a fall season, but the bigger but the bigger, more competitive season is our spring season. During the spring season, we compete for conference, state, and nationals. In Wisconsin, there are around a hundred teams competing in the U S in the Clay Target League. Each season, we are placed in the conference with similar sized teams throughout Wisconsin. Our school size doesn't determine what conference we are placed in. We have a mixture of middle school and high school athletes. During our season, we have five scoreable weeks with only so many scores being used toward our team. Example, we might have a team of twenty four athletes, but the top nineteen scores are used. Typically, we shoot two two rounds of twenty five, fifty plays per athlete. The athletes put a lot of time in and as of now, the team is a three-peat conference champ.
I'm going next. Um, hi everyone. My name is Landry Roseboom and this is my fifth season on the team. Um, I'm gonna talk to you guys about um state trap shooting. So it is held in Wisconsin Rapids. Um. In early June-ish, um.
What's that?
When when is the second or?
It's usually the second weekend of June.
Yeah, so like the second weekend of June. Um, we have one state back-to-back, so last year and this year. And we've been runner-up. We've been state varsity winners three times, so we're runner-up two summers ago. And then I think we won state the summer before that. Um, and so we usually have around twenty-five-ish people that go to state. And the cool thing about how Wisconsin runs their state trap shooting is um you don't have to qualify to do it. So anyone can go. Um, and really the amount of Riley kind of talked about how conferencing works, but. Um, yeah, so it's kind of cool that you don't really have to qualify, so you can be any age to go as long as you're, you know, part of your team, but that's pretty cool. Um. This kind of this year when we did traction, it was really rainy and gross, so we kind of like all had like persevered through the raininess because shooting a gun when it's raining and it's basically slipping out of your hands is not fun. Kind of got to wipe your some wipe your safety glasses off too because you can't see, but. Yeah, every score counts. Um, that's what remind that's what the coaches always remind us is that no score is more important than the other because you never know whose score they're gonna take each week. And so, yeah. That's kind of all about states.
Yeah, pull that up. Yep.
Hi, it's Malder Cran. I've been on the trap teams since sixth grade. This is my thirteenth season. And it's been fun. That's all I have then. Nationals is a pretty fun time. Nationals, you know, held in July at the MTA grounds in Mason, Michigan. There are base and shooters from all across the U S competing at Nationals. This last spring, the Clay Target League and around forty-nine thousand athletes participating, thirty-eight states competing. The best of the best sign up to shoot at Nationals as of now, eighteen hundred max individuals are allowed to shoot at two hundred and forty teams. You can shoot both team and individual as long as your season average qualifies. Individual qualifying average has gotten tighter. It has a twenty-one or higher and this year it has raised to twenty-three or higher. Competing is getting tough. If a school year, if a school is lucky, they might be able to register two teams, but registration fills quickly. When competing at Nationals, must qualify to shoot at championship day. On qualifying day, the team shoots a hundred rounds on Friday. As an individual, you shoot a hundred rounds on Saturday. The top eighty teams and top four hundred individuals move on to championship day. Championship day is held on Sunday and the team should a hundred rounds first. The top five teams make the championship podium. Individuals shoot the second with the top ten males and the top ten females to make it to championship podium. If there is a tie, they hold they hold a shootout. This year, there were fifteen males that shot perfect hundreds.
Hello, I am Liam Boil. This is my second year at trap. Last year, I when I joined trap, I felt like when I walked in, I felt extremely welcome. The people were friendly. I had a blast. Trap is super fun in multiple ways. It's also a great sport if you're really into like really competitive sports like football or basketball. It's like perfect for you. So I think trap would be the perfect sport for a lot of for a lot of people that find find interest in it. I found interest in it because as I love because I love shooting and guns, bows, I love fishing. And then when I heard this was a thing, I immediately wanted to do it. Ever since then, I hope I will try to be do better every year, no matter what happens.
Uh, hi, my name is Justin Gum. I've been shooting traps since sixth grade, so. You know, starting out, didn't really shoot a whole lot of guns in general. Uh, but grew big, you know, I got second uh in that or state uh in twenty twenty-four at uh in Grand Rapids, which is pretty exciting. I thought I'd never be able to do that probably in my high school career in general. But um, that was pretty exciting. Um. But that really it was that was a good, you know, I feel really happy about that. But probably one thing that brings me the most joy about trap is like teaching younger kids. Um, there's some younger kids where there's, you know, I kind of like to kind of take them under my wing like some of the older kids did to me when I came in. Uh, not try to, you know, throw shade or nothing, but there's some sports where I played in younger. It was like a divide in grades and age. And it was like, oh, you're a freshman, you know, go off the side, whatever. But uh in trap mainly kind of being taken under the wing by coaches and so seniors, upperclassmen was really nice. So I want to kind of do the same thing, pass it on, pass on the information that I've learned from coaches and other people. And um, hope that keeps going on till forever. Um, the state patch, Brad, let me show the patches. The state ones gives us these ones. Uh, we've gone to multiple different schools. We do like Battle of the Paddle where you go uh.
Super efficient game.
Yeah, and then different schools are there, whatever. We travel to their home ranges. They all have different patches, so we thought it'd be cool if we had our own central patches. So we got our own custom center central patches, under streets, I'll refer, I got a couple of them. Hopefully I get one. Uh, you know, we got all those or whatever, but. That's all. I don't got paper or nothing, so I I don't.
So just to echo what they say, we are kind of unique in the fact that we start with sixth graders and we go up to seniors. Um, and I will say that it's it's almost like a family. Um, to watch how I I've been fortunate enough to see uh uh our seniors here. I remember them when they were sixth graders. And I've gotten to watch them grow in this sport and get better and better. And that's an honor to really see how they've grown and they've developed. And now they're the ones mentoring some of those young ones that you see up in those pictures. And that's really cool to watch. Um, and I hope, fingers crossed, um, that they're willing to come back and and lead as coaches soon. Um, and that's what we always want to see, right? In the community, that that giving back. Um, and and that's my hope is that we continually see that giving back. Um, from what they've learned, they want to pass that on, so. Um, do you guys have any questions for us at all? Um, what we do, um, we shoot on Sunday afternoons for practice and then typically we take our scores on Thursdays. We take reserve week scores on Thursday tomorrow night.
Where do you shoot it?
Yes.
River Falls.
River Falls.
Okay.
What what are, I guess, your biggest hurdles with, I guess, you've been keeping it together for fourteen, fifteen years? You know, are there, what's kind of, I guess, your challenges there? You know, if you had a magic wand, that would?
Uh, watch it. Let's talk to our some of our parents because we got parents here too. I mean, I can speak to I've I've a parent as well as the because again, my oldest was on the team. He's now twenty-four. So Kelton um graduated from here in twenty nineteen and he started when he was seventh grade, I think, eighth grade. Uh, my middle one chose to be a golfer instead. Um, but then my daughter, if you didn't catch the same last name, um, she enjoys shooting, but I'm gonna let some of our our managers such parents also talk because I'm pretty being an employee. Well, Max is an employee too, but.
I'd like to answer that question because I I stand by these kids every single time. And when they're first starting, they have no idea upstand, how to start to recoil, getting every step of the way, just trying to keep the frustration from starting. And when they get to a point and they're shooting great, oh no, they have a growth spurt. Guess what? We have to adjust. And it's hard on them. Uh, our their best shooter. You shoot a ninety-eight, you go, I don't know what I'm doing wrong. Out of a hundred. And and sometimes it's just getting them to relax. A parent actually gave me a hat that says breathe. That's ninety percent of what I tell the kids. Take it in. Just breathe, reset up, and do it again. It's just that you want to talk about a challenge? It's them being hard on themselves to be perfect.
It's like most sports, right? It's it's teaching them that it's okay not to be perfect. You know, and how do we best go about educating them in that? You know, that it's okay if you drop a clay. You know, for them, it they don't feel like that and that it's okay, you know, you'll come back to to do it again next week. But sometimes that seems to be the biggest challenge is saying it's okay, you'll come back next week. Um, I think some of our other challenges is sometimes time. You know, we do have to share our range with especially in the spring. River Falls has a pretty significant sized team. Now they're in a different league than we are, but we have to share our range with them. Um, and that can sometimes pose some challenges timing-wise. Um, they have an agreement with the community down there. So we have to be done shooting by nine P M. So by the time we get on the range, it's like nine or six P M. And if we have a team size of roughly thirty, each of these kids have to shoot fifty rounds. We are very efficient.
So I would say our number one squad can get through all five stations in, I don't know, what is it, nine minutes?
Yeah, we can run through fifty rounds with one squad in under twenty minutes.
Yeah, I mean, they just their top squad is like two minute, two and a half minutes per station, so it's a little longer.
But they know how they know how to do it because they practice and we teach them that. And we are commended by people, not just in our state, but across the nation on our efficiency, but also our safety um and our level of respect. And for us, number one, safety and respect is really important. Respect for each other that's on the team, but respect for others in the sport.
I will say though, as a coach, one of the proudest things that I get is when we go to Rome to state, when the people that work the event are happy to see us because they see our kids being good and picking up stuff. And the boom, they're out, everything's clean when we're gone. I don't remember these people from year to year, but they remember us. And they come down and watch the kids shoot.
We have other teams watch us shoot.
Yeah, the same thing at Nationals, the artist or the rain safety officer stopped by to say, oh, hey guys, good to see you. I don't know his name, but they watch us. So that's if he follows us on Facebook, I found out.
Yep.
So that's quite the, pretty pretty neat.
But that's important to us is again, as I've always said, it's our character. Doesn't matter what the score is. It's our character and it's that legacy that we're leaving. That to me is most important because that's the imprint that everybody else sees and that's what our community needs to stand for. And that's what all these kids up here, the ones before them and the ones that'll come after them, that that's what needs to be left is that legacy. Not, yeah, the banners are awesome and we're very proud of those, but this is what's most important. Other questions? Every one of you are welcome to come out. RJ came out um last Thursday? Yeah, RJ came out um and watched us for a tiny bit last Thursday. His little ones were getting a little bored. It's really not their jam yet. Um, but anybody's welcome to come out and watch us. Um, we start about, well, we really get going about six o'clock on Thursday evenings. Um, so please feel free to come out to the range as our guest and watch what these kids do. Um, if you can't make it on Thursdays, we start shooting for some practice rounds about three o'clock on Sundays. Not all the kids are out there on Sundays, um, but you're certainly welcome to come out and join us on Sundays as well for a little bit. We welcome anybody to come out and see what we do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Pretty cool.
You guys don't have to feel like you have to stay either.
Thank you.
Good work, boys.
Good job, guys.
That's crazy.
Shoot a hundred straight?
Can imagine shooting seven straight. Big, that's a big number.
We have a attention span.
It was a pretty big battle in the Cran house to get Oliver and Riley to talk. We had lots of conversations this week.
They looked pretty excited.
Alright, we can move on to comments by board members and superintendent. We have the referendum update.
Uh, yeah, projects substantially complete, really just minor punch list things, um, some extra add-ons. Um, we're the softball press box, which is nearly complete. There is a special order window for the front. Uh, that's gonna come in uh next month. Um, then they'll finish being around that, et cetera. And then the athletic storage shed behind the existing one. It's a port. They're just waiting for all the materials, but they it's one of those quick pull barn type things that can go up in about two weeks. So expecting materials mid October, uh completed by November first, time to store hopefully all the stuff in there. Um, yeah, like I said, uh, just kind of wrapping up minor punch list things. And now it's uh, we're continuing on with with what we call the wish list with the interest that we earn to uh get some of the other stuff, so.
Tentative open house date?
Yep, so uh, had our second meeting this morning, CTE, uh, P L C. And uh, yeah, October thirtieth is the date, Wednesday, uh, four to seven thirty. Uh, it will be uh that evening. Um, I think we pretty much got the postcard done. Um, and uh, we send that to the printer soon and get that out. Um, you know, uh, about a month ahead of time. And then obviously continue to to market and advertise that really. The whole theme is just thanking our community with uh prize giveaways and snacks and treats from Panther Catering and demonstrations in every classroom, students and staff. Uh, yeah, it's gonna be good. Uh, so we're excited about that.
That's October fourth?
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth.
Oh, thirtieth, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe for Halloween.
It's a Wednesday, no activities, you know, there's the church, but uh we, you know, it's four to seven thirty. So um, you know, parents can drop their kids off at church and come, et cetera. Um, and there's parent teacher conference. There's always opportunities. We had open houses, et cetera. But this is gonna be more formal and more the theme of showing our gratitude to our community.
Alright, um, how about the update uh the first weeks of school?
Yeah, I'll maybe turn it over to uh the principals there sitting in the peanut gallery.
I've been running nonstop. I can tell school started.
Very great, as always. I uh, we got to talk about that yesterday morning. Um. Every every day and every hour is a gift and we more and more so been very intentional about hitting the ground running. And again, that was true this year, like the first day of school. Um, we're making sure that that time is valuable and well spent. And it's been really cool to see the staff just kind of hit the ground running. It's been great.
Yeah, it's been a great start. Um, one of the things we noticed at the elementary school, um, and a huge shout out to the community and to all of you. Our kindergarteners came in this year just like they own the school. It was beautiful. And we're like, what is? Because they were four K in the building. They knew the staff, they knew the building, they knew where to go. It was they entered, you know, we usually have a lot of criers and that transition is very hard, right? It's very intimidating to them. They came right into the school and we had all of our four K teachers right at the front doors to welcome them the first days. And they just came running right in. I mean, literally, we haven't hardly had any tears. You know, usually you're carrying them in. So kudos to everyone involved for that. It is a game changer. So we're super excited to see that for for our littles.
Yeah, and obviously at the high school, um, with our new spaces and working hard to get those fully operational, you know, there's still some little things that aren't quite buttoned up yet, but um, our kids and our families have seen those spaces. Our our kids love it. We've got some kids in the flex spaces that are on, um, you know, senior lease and they're in there doing their homework and they're kind of hanging out. And it's got that feel like what you want it to have. They're they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. They're working on their studies, um, and they're they're using the space. The other big change that's going well, um, going to our longer class periods. Uh, it was an adjustment the first couple of weeks having seventy minutes instead of the fifty-one. And the first the first week or so, we kind of heard about, you know, how how long it is and how tough it is. But now in this third week, the kids are starting to figure out the teachers have their pacing down. And uh, I today I started hearing the positives of, I actually kind of like being in my classes longer. This is this is working for me. So we're hopeful that that changes, that that change is gonna be positive for our kids, so.
A lot of positives uh feedback on the speed bumps? The speed mountains?
They work. They work.
Safety first.
They work.
Safety first.
I do have to say, I really like it when I come to drop my kids off at every uh school that we have here. And I see you guys all out front. It's just really, uh, I don't know, it just feels more like a much more welcoming facility than than walking into a cold door and trudging on in. It's great to see. Like that first day for uh one of my daughters, I won't name names any names, but she was a freshman and 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 Plow and and RJ and a few other teachers were out there and she was pretty nervous. I don't really know why, but she was. And and they made some jokes and then boom, she's smiling right away. So it it goes a long ways. I maybe you guys don't realize it, but it really does go a long ways.
Thank you. Alright, uh, moving on to twenty twenty-five W A B State Educational Convention, January twenty-second to the twenty-fourth down in Milwaukee. You in? No, if you know, you don't have to know right now because we've got a while, right Kelly?
Yes, but if you know you for sure can't go, let me know so I can cancel the rooms.
Sure can or can't, I guess.
Yep, how many rooms reserved right now? Eight rooms, so.
So you're in?
I'm in. Is that a weekday weekend?
Yeah, it's like Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday to Friday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Oh, yeah, we leave Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, yeah.
Or whenever you can.
Come back Friday by.
Cause like Lance has joined us late.
Two or three.
Anybody? Are you in? Are you out?
It's wrestling season.
Yeah, I'm not out.
Yeah, maybe.
I mean, I can't, I wouldn't say no for sure. I'd like to go.
Yeah.
It's a long time in the future to.
Nope, okay.
It's not in the middle of the week.
Okay. Alright, well, just keep bringing it up and let Kelly know if you're in or out as well. Okay, moving on to Wisconsin School Board Appreciation Week, um, October sixth to the twelfth with that. Um, and I think there will be a like there'll be snacks at the October board meeting.
October board meeting, yeah, actually will be more of a meal, I believe. So right as she worked with you.
Be serious.
I don't have a menu yet.
Remember last year, we planned that, but then we also had
I'm in Denver.
That meeting beforehand, we never got to eat.
Well, no, it's not.
On the twenty-first.
Oh, okay.
I'll need yours.
I was nervous I was gonna miss those scones again.
Oh, the scones are the night. Yeah.
The scones are a little bit, scones are the night.
Crap. I'll say, thank you.
So that's the next thing is staff appreciation.
You're leaving again. You're on your own.
October ninth, where we divvy up the schools, um.
Consider my kids though. They'd love to help you.
Anybody have a preference of schools to?
Yeah, I mean, I can't help.
Okay.
I think elementary.
Okay. Brad, high school. Dave, you said elementary?
I'm out.
Okay.
Jesus, I thought you know.
I do, I'm in high school.
Yeah.
I'll probably do high school since Jackie's there.
Dave, I'm gonna have Megan drop Amelia and Wiley off to help cart scones around the place, okay?
Okay, did you get that?
Yes.
Alright, so now we can move on to the summer school report. And we've got Jackie Palmer, middle school assistant principal.
Is it Jackie?
Jack, is it Jackie?
It's something.
Oh, I know he's.
What is it?
Jake Wellen.
Jake Wellen, yeah.
Jack Wellen, Jackie. Palmer. Alright, um, are you running the clipper then?
I am.
Alright, so I'm basically just here to report on summer school. Um, I want to share just kind of our, you know, the trend. It's been very similar the last three years as far as how many kids register, um, how many kids show up. Um, hoping and jumping ahead. Here's our schedule. Um, June, this year we had the four four-day weeks. Um, in July, we have two full weeks of swimming lessons and then in August, we have two four-day weeks for our job. So our intervention kind of more academic focused summer school. Um, just grabbed a couple of pictures from each of the levels on the top left. Um, I know there will be a lot more pictures, but this uh Bowden Island's had a run club, a summer run club. And by the end of summer school, they all ran a five K put on by her parents. So there was medals and it was just a super fun class that she put on. Um, and then our elementary kids just doing the arts and crafts. Our stem down on the left and then um one of our high school helpers in the weight room in the V F S with one of our buddies. So it's super fun. Go ahead. Um, yeah, you probably can't see any of those course offerings, but that's what we have. So when parents register, they go on and they pick their kids' grade. Um, and then there's gonna be a bunch of options as far as what the class offerings are. Um, and then they select on for, you know, the three classes. We try to honor all of them, but they fill up really quick. There are certain We try to honor all of them, but they fill up really quick, there are certain classes that are like twenty five student cap and and they're filled up. And last year, it's not this year, but last year, class was filled up in three minutes, so it's just like beyond a register and and get it, get it in. Um this is kind of the, all the, the numbers, all the data, um crunched there, as you can see in June. Um between all three buildings, uh we had three hundred and seventy four students registered, three hundred and seventy one kids show up. Um that's all the classes at the elementary, um all the classes offered at the middle school and then there were four students that had some summer school at the high school. Um in August, this was one of our higher attendance in the last three years, did forty three kids register. Um I think I invited uh almost close to seventy students to that, um that number is kind of based on. All the teachers and grade levels kinda just recognize some kids to invite to that academic jumpstart hoping. Just to give them a little boost before the school year, um and forty two students of the forty three attended. Um and then at the high school, Mr. Buckle does like a pre A P class just to kinda get kids in the swing of things. And so he had twenty four kids in attendance for that, so. Um swimming lessons, we always have a really pretty good turnout, um hundred twenty four registered and a hundred eighteen attended. That's still taking place in Ellsworth, um we've got a good system with them. They're great and welcoming and they always have lots of great things to say, you know, about the students, you know, we're there for a long chunk of time and kids get down there at about. Nine thirty and they're there until a little after eleven and. You know, there's only a third of them can swim at the same, you know, at once and the other ones are playing on the playground and staying busy and. You know, knock on wood, it was a great, a great swimming lessons. So I think that's, that's that, we don't have to look at all these pictures, I mean, super long, but just kinda some of the fun crafty things that they did at the elementary. They did the like paper mache, ice cream cone, and they took wire clothes hangers and put it on, um or they shaped it. And put um leggings over top and then they kind of created this sculpture, um the kids loved that. And that was Miss McKeever, she just did a lot of fun activities, really messy with cleanup time. I don't know, about an hour every day, you know, just cleaning up the glue and paint and all the things, but she loved it, so. Um here's just some middle school things, um a little bit different, you know, the activities, we, it's hard to find teachers all the time and so we had five teachers, two from. Out of district and then three in district, um but like I said, we had the fun, the fun run club. She did also a read and run club, so they would like run somewhere, read a little bit and come back or run to the library and read, you know, so. Just trying to make it enjoyable for everyone, um there was kind of an indoor outdoor games, which you can kinda see in those, the middle and the top right. Um and then one was more an outdoor um class and so they did some buckthorn removal, did some experiments um in the classroom and. And the kids just liked that hands on, staying busy, especially as they get, I mean, I guess it's physiologist, right? So um you can click to the next one. Just some more pictures, buckthorn removal, um little science experiment volcano, um in the bottom right, they had a guest speaker come in and just talk about. Um volcanoes and the ash and she brought in little vials of of the substances and the kids had to feel and pass it around and she kinda just spoke to them, so that was pretty cool. And then our service learning, this is the second year of doing a service learning group and this is always just a big hit, right? So um last year, we partnered with twenty two or twenty one, twenty two farms, caught on twelve, and this year they just had something come up, so we couldn't. Couldn't do that this year with them, so we kinda had to get creative, um we can, we did the food drive, um and then we also. Went up to Pine Lake Pastures and the kids went up there and did some chores, they did some paintings, some repairing of the, the. Things that horses jump over, what do they call?
Count.
Sure. Okay.
They are, oh true.
One of those things that they go on top of, that's, come on, the poles.
The poles?
Yeah, there we go, holy moly, um. The, the poles on the, yeah, um and then they went out to the huge farm and did some stuff out there for John and Amy. Um and they went, this year was the new, new spot that they took on was in Richmond and it was the soar center farm. At the Richmond School District, so they just are always looking for people to volunteer and help them out with whatever it might be, so if you skip a, the next one, it might have. Um some of these washing the dog is at Pine, Pine Lake Pastures. The calf, the calves is, are some things that they did, they walked the calves at the soar center. Um did a lot of cleaning, a lot of physical, physical work and, you know, Mrs. Malatchek kinda led that group and she always says after that first or second day. She crosses her fingers, that kids will come back, then they all come back, so. Next, um just some more pictures, walking some of the.
There's the poles.
There are the poles, yeah, if I would've saw it, I probably would've keep it to my mind a little bit quicker. And then the swimming lessons, never really take a picture of one kid, it's just the group of them, right? Um and even one of our teachers got in the water with a buddy to make it not so scary, so. And then that was written on one of the teacher's summer school screens, so I thought, yeah, I'll take that, yeah, so. That's what I have.
That's great.
Any questions?
Where's Miss Malatchek?
I should've bothered her, she's probably in bed. She's an early bird. Alright, she said just a little extra.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, next up is Stacy, our communication, our communications grant update, and she is our communications coordinator.
Alright, um we're here to do an annual report on the grants in communications, so we'll start with going over a quick rundown of the. Grants from the last year, um I was just like to look up a few little tidbits about like grants for people. Um so there's three different types, generally you can find grants from foundations, which tend to have a few more geographic. Requirements or support specific causes more than others, um the federal government actually is. Unknown as being the largest source of total grant funding for education, um so they're one that we go to a lot for things and then. Um you can find corporate grants, they are a little bit harder to find, um as they only do about three percent of total grant funding. Um and then I found an article on the top challenges for grant seekers in twenty twenty four and um. Twenty one percent were a lack of time or staff on finding grants, um fifteen percent was difficulty in finding. Grant opportunities that matched with your specific mission or program, that's more of those foundations. Um fourteen percent were in increased requirements of of what you needed to qualify for the grants and then ten percent. Was a competition for a set amount of money, which we've run into, especially with like arts funding, because there's. A lot of people looking for that and not many people getting that, so we run into that quite a bit when we're looking for those types of grants. Um so some of the grants we did get this year, we, um I worked with Garrett on giving a fifty thousand dollar one. That went towards the purchase of a fan hook, I'm saying that right? Um and then the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, we received twenty five thousand to go towards uh the purchase of a C N C mill. Um I applied, this is the second time I've applied for that Andrew Lloyd Webber, but again, it's, that one's hard. That was for auditorium equipment, those are just, there's always just so many people trying to get those. And then I did try to get some money from that, this Everwood, Everwood Foundation to, for some money for high school band instruments and did not receive that one. Um we did get through the Department of Justice, um the twenty, up to twenty thousand dollars for the digital mapping of the schools. And um Nick Yoder is actually going to be, he was talking about it last month at the meeting, I know he's gonna use that with his new assets management. System for keeping track of his stuff, so that works out really good with him. Um and then I did give, there's this awesome foundation that um. People are able to just apply for like a thousand dollars for like small things and they give like ten a month, I believe. So I did give that one to a couple of teachers, I asked them if they would let me know if they tried, I haven't heard back from any of them, so I'm not sure if. They tried and didn't get it or anything on that one. Um right now, um Sandy Secco Rios was looking for um money for our romaine lettuce growing tower. Um so I did, there's a lettuce give that I did apply for, um they do so many a month, so hopefully I'll hear back pretty soon on that one. And then um the St. Cravelli Music Education Grant is due on October twenty fifth and um Carrie. Datas is looking for some, Cara Datas, is looking for some um. Studio forty nine instruments that I'm gonna work with her on getting that one and then also. You can do more than one if you have, so I'm gonna also apply for that for posture chairs with Melanie Newman, so. Hopefully one of those at least gets some of that money and then I am gonna try, once again, they're doing a. Like a. A, like a seminar thing on that Andrew Lloyd Webber one this year for the first time, so I signed up to. Like. Log into that and hopefully that'll help maybe possibly actually get some money from that one this time, um so that would be for some more wireless microphones in the auditorium. Um so our funds received, um last year were ninety five thousand, um requested was a hundred and forty eight thousand. Um and then in comparison to the previous year, we had received two hundred and ten thousand. And then there was a really big one that we applied for in twenty two, twenty three that we didn't get. So that's why that's eight hundred and seventy nine thousand was requested last year. Um so on to the next year, um these are just some things that. Different teachers have asked me to be on the lookout for money for. So again, continuing with looking for money for band instruments, um I've, I've been looking for money for Biz Town for a while. Keymaster keyboards at the middle school, bouncy bands at the middle school, somebody did ask to look and see if I could find money to repair some lockers at the middle school. Um stem bins, those studio forty nine instruments. And then there are quite a few library grants, so I was gonna reach out to Jenny Franklin and just see if there's some of those we could apply for. Um there's been a lot of people asking for wiggle seats or some sort of flexible seating, so looking at that. Um working with Sandy on those lettuce growing towers and then just snowshoe skis, um bronze equipment. Possibly those wireless microphones, but Mitchell did say that that was kind of a little priority to him. So just some of the things I'm looking for right now. Um and then that kind of concludes the grants, move on to communications. Um so we did begin this year, um doing some digital advertising through Virtual Academy. Um so we are paying six hundred and thirty dollars a month for thirty five thousand impressions. Um so that comes out to seven thousand five hundred and sixty annual. But if we receive even just one open enrollment, um that would be, be equivalent of eight thousand nine hundred and sixty two dollars for the district. So even if we just get one out of the digital advertising, it pays for itself. Um so um the three graphs, we have the click through rate, which pretty much, we, we started in January. And I just put in from our reports that we receive monthly. And um you'll see like over the summer, it dropped a little bit, so we're hoping that now we're on the upswing on all of these actually. You know, they drop a little bit in the summer when people aren't necessarily looking as much, so we're hoping that these continue to now climb. Now they are again. Um I did look up what a good click through rate is, so that's the measurement of how many people click on the ad. In relation to how many times a person sees the ad. A good click through rate for education, um if you're searching for something for education is six point one seven percent. So we're not quite at that point yet, hopefully the more we do it, we get a little higher. Um and for, if you just show up as a display when somebody isn't actively looking for you, a good click through rate is twenty five, thirty percent. Um so this is um. From January through March, um our ads said flexible online learning, so we're trying to be very intentional with what. Words, what keywords we're choosing to include in the ads and find a good match. Um and then from March to July, we did virtual online courses and then July until right now, we're, I'm a flexible online education and on the side, there are. Just examples of what those ads would've looked like showing up on people's phones. Um so this is secret virtual academies enrollment, um compared last year to this year. So last year, um they had thirty four resident um. Students in September and two hundred and five open enrolled in. And like to date, um and this year, they have thirty three resident and two hundred and forty open enrolled. So hopefully some of those are coming from that advertising. And um Stephanie Costa did say that the twenty three, twenty four was our highest enrollment with the exception of just during COVID.
And this is our highest at, of any September right now, like signed six more today, it's, it's five to. Ten almost daily the last three weeks, this is our, I mean, highest enrollment period, August, September typically, and then we had another big magic. Semester time in January, but um yeah, trending very positively and you'll, you'll see my report later, you know, it says two hundred and nine. Uh for September, but that was a week ago Monday, alright, and this is as of today, so we, we had thirty one in ten days.
Did we ask the student how they?
Yeah.
I mean, I know that's gray area, but.
It is, yeah, it's, it's not a required thing, but on their application form, we ask them how you heard about us, we don't always get that, so Steph's got more anecdotal data, but. Yeah, she has been hearing or seeing that they heard about it online, but still the number one is word of mouth. Family talks to another family and, but, yeah.
Um also, starting this year, we started with the quarterly newsletters, um the first issue was delivered the end of March and then we followed up with the second one, the end of June. And then we all set our back to school on early August and so we're anticipating, try to be a fall one out around October and June, around January. Um so I, I, last year, I, I looked up some of our analytics. Um so compared to September nineteenth was when I pulled them last year, um we had six point four thousand in the thirty days. Last year and we're at seven point five thousand this year, um and then like in the one day, um last year, it was four hundred and forty five. Compared to five hundred and thirteen this year, so that's trending higher than it was last year. And that's just like a top ten pages that are viewed on our website. And then I just pulled the top four Facebook posts that we've had in the last thirty days, so a lot of it is the. Back to school stuff, um the open house and the new teachers, um. As of the sixteenth, our Facebook followers are three thousand seven hundred and ninety, which is three hundred and fifty six new since September nineteenth of last year. And fifty seven of those are just in the last twenty eight days. And then on Instagram, which I just got our Instagram going last February, um we have three hundred and seventy as of the sixteenth. And that's two hundred and fifty three new since last September. Um and then this is just showing us benchmarked with the other middle border conference schools, um so you'll see like. Kind of how many page likes compared to other ones, we were actually below Osceola last year, so we moved up one spot. Um which we're still pretty close on page likes, um. Um, maybe it's just that we had more published content, I don't know what made us jump about them. So just showing us in relation to the other schools in our conference. And then lastly, we will be help, or I will be helping, I did the workout about the community open house. Um, and again, like we kind of talked about it a little bit earlier, but the postcard hopefully will be sent out in the next couple of weeks here. And I did already circulate a webpage that we will provide more details about the schedules and things that we have going on with that. And then obviously a lot of social media communication prior to the event to get people up to that. And that is it, does anybody have any questions?
Information, I love it. Took a lot of digging and.
Love it.
A lot of good information like this, puts it all together.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to the financial reports. Pressure report.
Good. So list of eight thirty one, twenty twenty four, balance of the citizen state bank checking is four million five hundred ninety eight thousand two hundred sixty three dollars and seventy six cents. Money market account is twelve thousand two hundred eighty four dollars and twenty seven cents. Fund forty six is fifty eight dollars and twenty one cents. Suicide prevention is five thousand one hundred fifty four dollars and twenty four cents. Debt service account is a one hundred and sixty nine thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty six cents. Uh, one referendum account is a zero balance. Another referendum account, three million sixty one thousand six hundred thirteen dollars and eight cents. Debt service, one hundred fifty three thousand five hundred and thirty three dollars and ten cents for a total balance of eight million five hundred twenty four dollars and twenty two cents.
Move approval. Second.
Jeff made the motion, Lance second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, next is consideration of consent agenda. I have eighty six part-time and seven full-time, uh, curricular modification requests for virtual courses for twenty four, twenty five school year. We also have approval of the agreement for intellectual disability program with Baldwin Woodville and approval of the agreement for extended school year sessions with high school, or with Hudson. Sign the motion. They made a motion.
Second.
Red, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Right, motion carries, next on to administrative reports, student enrollment update by Tim.
Uh, just a reminder, this is done during the school months, uh, not during the summer, obviously, but, um, this data is submitted by, uh, the lead administrative assistant in each building, compiled by Abby here in the district office, do a lot of work, it's a lot of, a lot more work than one thing to, to track students because it's complicated, but, um, this isn't the official count, the official third Friday count, which is the big one, is this Friday. And, uh, they'll tally everything and meet, uh, the following Tuesday and submit that. So next month we'll have our third Friday count, which our October annual budget is, um, based upon. But, uh, this is a pretty good, you know, indicator of, of, of where we will be at. But, um, I want to show you, you know, uh, our, our in-seat enrollment has dipped slightly, but, you know, it's all in the numbers, um, we just look at it, um. But I really, you know, we knew the birth rates were down in the county, um, but with that said, we have more four K students in this year than we had, uh, started with last year. Early childhood always grows throughout the year, it's when they turn three. So as children turn three throughout the year, they can enroll in that program. Um, but you look at what they call cohort survival rate, um, you know, from year to year, kindergarten last year, one oh two, one oh four this year, one oh nine, one oh nine, one seventeen, one twenty two. So you look at each one of these and they've stayed the same or they've grown with the exception of one class, uh, this year's juniors. Um, but, uh, you know, we got, we had a hundred twenty one students graduate in seats, alright? And you bring in eighty, uh, two students. So you're, you're gonna have a natural decline when you bring in a class that's smaller than when you graduate. But again, we don't control birth rates, uh, so, um, but we can't control our cohort survival and hopefully retain our, our, our students and attract some more. So overall, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with those numbers. Um, and then obviously, month to month, you see the size of our school, how many are in each school. Our free and loose lunch rate stays the same, uh, that won't change until, I believe, next month, the October fifteenth, that grace period. If they were free or reduced or full price, whatever, that all just stays the same, uh, until October fifteenth. Um, and then lastly, I always like to point out our open enrollment numbers, which are outstanding. Obviously, uh, we are abnormal in terms of the majority of the state is the opposite of this. Um, well, obviously, I mean, I'm not a statistical major, they all, uh, everyone can't be above average, uh, but, you know, they gotta go somewhere.
They're like.
Right, yeah, we have way more in than out, we can, you know, and I like to believe that we can control that. And a big part of that is our, uh, virtual charter school. And you can see where it, it says at two oh nine, uh, as of today, two forty already. And then in-seat students though, we, we have a hundred forty four students open on our district to attend in, in seats and then two hundred and nine slash two forty, uh, virtually, uh, so that's amazing. Um, and then, uh, yeah, we also have thirty three resident students attending full-time that live within our district boundaries and fifty four part-time. So this number you'll see, uh, in October. Um, and then again, the revenue limit worksheet, our budget, uh, will be largely based upon that. So overall, trending, uh, very well.
Thank you. Moving on to the key work of our school board, student, staff and community recognition. Dave's gonna read that for us.
Oh, we.
Oh, yeah.
Didn't do that? No, we did, no, we did Dave and Brent.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I know I don't wear socks anymore.
Alright, we have a few thank yous this month. Uh, Ryan Thurston, Eric Caviso and Jake Schnor. Uh, thank you, your professionalism attitude, or attention to detail, unprompted willingness to go the extra mile for us during this amazing project is greatly appreciated. The amount of wish list items we have been able to add because of your diligence is mind blowing. To be able to trust you and M and J completely has completely removed the stress from this construction project. Your quality of work is outstanding, you're appreciated and we'll be missed. And then we have Kurt Schmidtfrance and Clay Jensen. Your attention to detail and unprompted willingness to go the extra mile for us during this amazing project is greatly appreciated. You worked very hard and did a ton of extras, did a ton extras for us. To be able to trust you and M and J completely has completely removed the stress from this construction project. Your quality of work is outstanding, you're appreciated and we'll be missed. And then we have Chad Consola, thank you for your tremendous dedication and work ethic, especially during this complex referendum project where there has been an extreme amount of technology needs. Your long days, weekends and quality work has not gone unnoticed, you are appreciated.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, uh, we'll move on to core agenda items. First up is consideration of approval of the esports coaching compensation, and it's Jen.
So last May, when we approved all the extracurricular coaches and activities, um, I had incorrectly put four coaches for each of the esports, um, seasons for fall, winter and spring, as you can see on the top part of your, of the sheet there. So it was brought to our attention and we just wanted to fix that because the board really only approved two esports coaching positions for each fall, winter and spring. So you can see that on the bottom portion there. So everything else within the coaching and activities model will stay the same, but we are asking for approval to revise that for those esports positions.
Do we have a motion?
Is it moved?
Second.
Lance made the motion, Jeff second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries, alright? And then we've got consideration of approval of the second board readings, B through G.
I wanted to, um, point out two changes since the first reading, uh, policy eight thirty two, weapons on school premises, premises. Um, again, uh, two, uh, like Lance had brought up, to make sure that we're covered uh, with a couple of different activities that we do, trap teams one, uh, archery and fire is another. But you can see the highlighted there, area there that, uh, um, would allow for weapons used for school sanctions activities on school property and/or in school, uh, vehicles under the supervision of the, the district staff. And then eight, eighty two point one, you can see the changes there, school police liaison programs, uh, again, our, uh, attorney. Some suggested, uh, changes and doing, you can see the strike throughs and changes we made there.
Move to approve core gen items, A through G.
Second.
Alright, so Lance made a motion, Derek second, all in favor, or any more discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries, then we have consideration of first readings, H through R, which is just.
Just, uh, a note, uh, the policy nine, three, four. I don't, I just don't have access, when you click on it, this is access denied, maybe it's just me?
No, it's me too.
Alright, Kelly building, change those sheer settings. Um, also note that those, that brings us to the end. Those are the last policies, the nine hundreds. So this time next month, and then, uh, as I mentioned before, we're gonna develop a, a, a five-year cycle of reviewing all the policies, doesn't mean we're gonna look at every policy. We are going to look at it administratively and, uh, you know, bring it to the board if, you know, there's requirements and or, you know, let's look out, say, oh, we need to change some language or whatever. And, uh, you know, if you want to be involved in that and be on the committee, you're more than welcome. We can do a committee of that to look at that, or however you wanna handle that, but that's kind of a, will be a new process.
Alright. Okay, we do have one, uh, we have one, I guess, policy to approve or to eliminate. And so we need a motion for letter S to eliminate. Dave made the motion.
Second.
And Derek second, any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries, any possible future agenda items by anybody?
We do the, oh, it's right there, nevermind, I was gonna say, we're during the October meeting on a Monday, right?
That's right, yeah, so the upcoming important dates is October ninth is the staff appreciation breakfast starting at seven fifteen in each building, Scones will be there for us. October twenty first, which is Monday, is here at the district office at seven. And October twenty third is the fall regional meeting, M and Ome at six at the Uprightway Banquet Center. And has everybody let you know, Kelly?
Um, I have Lance as a maybe and Josh, I don't know anything about.
I'm going.
And I have everybody else as yeses except for Tim.
Yeah, Josh is not.
No.
So Jeff is going, okay.
Lance, did you say after lunch or?
I'm still, I'm planning on it.
Oh, no, yeah.
Can you email him and let him know to make a lot of coffee for Dave?
Better get started.
Better get started, I don't like it. Alright, um, I think that should be it for the upcoming dates. Now we need, um, a motion to convene to close session and you need to read that. Okay, it's gonna move on.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, uh, I make a motion to convene to close session.
I think I did this last time, yeah.
Okay, alright, per Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight, five dash one dash F, considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or discrepancy data, or sorry, disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where R B applies, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. I, facilities, use, discussion.
Alright, so Derek made the motion.
Second.
Lance, second, roll call.
Aye, but I, I always wanna say my name when that comes out, I don't know why.
Right, eight oh five.
I know you do.